Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, December 18, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kail Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise.
I'm here.
Six members present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamation, and we have one to be presented by Councilman Kraus.
Yes, Madam President, thank you.
Good morning.
Want to do it up here?
I'm good. How are you?
Oh geez, I just said something.
Oh my, don't you look nice. Oh, not embarrass you. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to embarrass you.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, so whereas on December 31, 2023, at 11:00 a.m., a truly remarkable and joy-filled occasion, the Baby and Family Noon New Year's Eve Celebration, presented by Southside Works and hosted by Low Rose and Southside Kids, is proudly brought to you in person at Cohatch Southside Works. And whereas the age-appropriate programming ensures a delightful experience for parents and their little ones, fostering the creation of unforgettable memories as we usher in the new year at noon. And whereas the Baby and the Family Noon Eve's Celebration is one of the premier events of Pittsburgh's tiniest residents, bringing families of all backgrounds together to safely celebrate the new year. And whereas the extraordinary vision behind this event springs from the experiences of new parents Devina and Chris Marle, who amid the challenges of a pandemic and time-appropriate celebrations, discovered the power of virtual experiences in making holidays and special occasions unforgettable. And whereas this inspiring journey emphasized the significance of staying connected to friends, community, and loved ones, even in the virtual realm, leading the visionary mom and her husband alongside their child to create a safe, virtual, and time-appropriate gathering accessible to all parents free of charge with this year's expanding to an in-person format. And whereas this unique Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve Celebration extends a warm invitation to our cherished community of families in the city of Pittsburgh and beyond, embracing both new parents and seasoned ones to partake in an early New Year's celebration with a baby-friendly virtual gathering like no other, right in time for baby's next nap. And whereas this celebration has garnered immense love and support, attracting families from Pittsburgh and the region over the past two years, and stands as the only baby- and family-friendly Noon Year's Eve Celebration that ensures naptime remains undisturbed, thoroughly aligning with the schedules of precious babies and their families. So now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the organizers of the Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve Celebration for their exceptional dedication and ingenuity in fostering a spirit of unity, joy, and connection among parents and families, providing a celebratory experience that shall create cherished memories to last a lifetime. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 31, 2023 to be Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve Celebration Day here in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you.
There you are. Congratulations.
The Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve is first and foremost about community. When my husband and I, when my husband Chris and I, excuse me, became new parents in 2021, we entered into a new community of parenthood, but we were heavily isolated by that community due to the pandemic. As I stand here today, my heart is filled with gratitude and joy and thankful to the community we as parents and Southsiders now have. This gratitude extends particularly to the Southside Kids, Claire, whose encouragement and unwavering support have been instrumental in the success of our event, the Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve Celebration. The celebration born, was born from the desire to create something special for families like ours following the birth of our daughter, and has become a space for unity and joy in our community, the Southside. The Southside, thanks to people like Claire and programs like this, showcases that the Southside is a family-oriented community. When we started in 2021, it was an opportunity to give families a reason to celebrate and still have a reasonable naptime. Our theme, as you've heard, is right in time for baby's next nap. In 2021, virtual events were the easiest and safest for small children and families to be together, and that continued into the next year. This year, we are so excited to partner with Southside Kids and the Southside Works for our very first in-person Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve. Our work was founded to bring a sense of community for new families here in Pittsburgh, as well as create fun and accessible opportunities that cater to the needs of families and young children. As we prepare to welcome another year, let us celebrate these moments of togetherness and the community we've strengthened together. Thank you, Southside Kids and the Southside Works and Councilman Kraus, for your partnership and commitment to enriching the lives of families in the Southside and greater Pittsburgh. Thank you, everyone, for being part of our journey, for your enthusiasm, and for helping make the Baby and Family Noon Year's Eve Celebration a cherished tradition. Here's for wonderful, joyous, and prosperous New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve for all. Claire, do you want to say even more?
Just wanted to say thank you to Delvina and Councilman Kraus and our Councilman's office, of course Bob, who helps me a lot. Southside Kids was started in 2018 at the birth of my daughter, just kind of as a collective structure and a way to facilitate communications between us, and we quickly learned that Southside Kids is not only about the kids, it's about the mothers too. So being able to foster immunomoms who have these big ideas in our community and create more events and programming to be able to withstand our bandwidth, and then of course, attract and retain families to the Southside is one of our major goals, and always providing free, accessible events. So everything we do, we always try to make it as accessible to anyone in our community to come check out the Southside. Thank you.
Chris, would you like to come up with a photo? We're going to take a picture.
Thank you. We have one for Councilwoman Strasburger. Be to read into the record. Is she here?
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, December 18, 2023 to be, to be 2023 Central Catholic Vikings Football Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Some move, Madam President.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved.
Okay.
Thank you. And that moves us on to the next order of business, which is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern official action or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to this podium, please speak, to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Where's things? Let's wait.
When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. Our first registered speaker, our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bells Hoover, Oxford, England, United Kingdom. 412-969-7997. I can be reached 24/7. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. I'm the GIS, Global Intelligence Society U.S. Candidate for President 2024. At the University of Oxford, St. Anthony's College, the Institute of Japanese Studies, my PhD work on the Nichie E Domei, the Anglo-Japanese Alliance of 1902, has decisively informed my view of modern Japan. I think we need a Nichi Bay Domei, a Japanese-American alliance, a former one, with local axes which include Pittsburgh to Tokyo. A concern of Pittsburgh Council and Mayor is to tout Pittsburgh as an advanced city, Pittsburgh as a science and technology locality with global here meaning worldwide linkage. If Pittsburgh is such an advanced local-global city, why is its supercomputer only petascale at 10 to 15 ops per second? Fugaku SC in Japan, number two fastest in the world, is nearing exascale at 10 to 18, and already Frontier SC in the United States at Oak Ridge at 10 to 18 plus. Why is the Pittsburgh SC so slow? What are Jehanion at CMU and Gable at the University of Pittsburgh doing about that? If Pittsburgh is an advanced global, why have its biological safety lab three and virology center not made a new SARS-CoV-2 vaccine? The Tokyo government, Nihon, has approved the first SR self-replicating messenger RNA vac. What are we doing here? If Pittsburgh is such an advanced local-global educator, why are PPS pre-university students less than in the top 10 on the program of international assessment tests while Tokyo kids are in the top five? If Pittsburgh is such a global-local urban model, why are Pittsburgh streets so dirty compared with Tokyo streets? You can, you can basically go anywhere in Tokyo and it's clean, and you can eat off of the, you wouldn't want to, but you could eat off the sidewalk. Pittsburgh streets are really contaminated. In Tokyo, you are four times less likely to be murdered than in Pittsburgh. This is a very significant statistic, and I encourage you all to, to look at it very, very closely.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Nolan P. Duncan. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Nolan Duncan. I'm of the Avalon neighborhood. I've been a resident of Pittsburgh for over four years now. It's been extremely wonderful, and this past year has been an enlightening one, considering I've been through personal financial struggles with my car. This makes me sincerely thankful for the modernization of public, of the public transportation system. Additionally, in order to cut costs, I started to ride my bicycle to my job, which is in the strip. And keep in mind, I've moved recently from the North Side to Avalon, which is a six-and-a-half mile difference, so it is definitely quite a challenge. As biking has been incorporated into my lifestyle, it has been my intention this morning to bring to your attention my concerns over the state of Ohio River Boulevard. As many of us know, Ohio River Boulevard is busy, and it is essential for commuters, but it is also very unsafe and often neglected with its sidewalks. The sidewalks are life-threatening. Foliage, refuse, and natural weathering makes them inaccessible in certain spots, from the edge of the city limits all the way to Chateau. This makes it challenging not only as a bicyclist, but for pedestrians as well. I don't know if you've noticed, but drivers are also extremely dangerous with their speed, causing much concern that this could be a fatal risk for those who are seeking a fast way to work. I would like to propose to both this council and to the Commonwealth solutions that include an evaluation of Route 65 to ensure that the safety of pedestrians and non-motorized modes of transportation are of the utmost importance. This would mean proper improvements in care of these existing sidewalks that make it both beneficial for our city's commuters. Secondly, better speed enforcement of Route 65. This may include actual officers monitoring the route where possible, or by engineering ways to deter motorist speed. Ultimately, what does this mean for the city? A safer route for commuters, motorized and non-motorized alike, to travel to and fro. A greener city, where more commuters are encouraged to ride or walk towards our iconic skyline, reducing smog and carbon emissions. And lastly, a scenic revision to one of the most essential and beautiful entrances to the city. I thank you all for your time and consideration. I yield back my time.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here.
Good morning.
I honor my husband, who was a true servant of the city of Pittsburgh from the 1970s to 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonaire. This is for you, Michael. The Bonaire Elementary School once was a shining example of what a city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander it. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say, take it down. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled the Declaration of Rights. The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereign, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. This was right at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name, and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop whatever he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bonaire community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonaire. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
Good morning. I thought I registered, but I didn't. My name is Jamie Marie Christian. I'm the founder and executive director of Let Us Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective. We are based in Carrick, and you have to excuse me, I'm getting over a little illness. First, I just wanted to say thank you all for your support and the efforts that I have come down to testify about previously, the land bank and also the Food Justice Fund. Those two things alone have made a huge impact on our urban agriculture communities and our community at large, because food affects everyone, and it especially affects mental health. The second thing that I wanted to bring up was mental health, and you know, it would be beautiful to see as much enthusiasm and passion for initiatives that have to deal with mental health. I know it's social services, but it's also a people issue, and the people of this city have elected you all as their leaders and to make their decision, make informed decisions on behalf of them. And last, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gross, because I didn't get to, on Thursday for supporting the continued composting program. I did give a, some insight on my own mental, medical problems that I've had to deal with that are caused by heavy metal toxins in the soil. Vermiculture is one way to get rid of those heavy metal toxins, and also to answer a question that Councilman Wilson stated after when he came in about bringing money into the city. Vermiculture's big business. People pay like 30 bucks for a bag of worm casings. They're just big. So municipal vermiculture farm where you could sell to other counties and corporate farms can bring you money in. So I just wanted to share that out with you all. Thank you again so much for your partnership and your leadership this year. I wish you all a very happy, healthy New Year's and holiday season. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, everybody. My name is Rick Nor, and I'm from Brookline. And I really didn't intend on coming down here to talk today, but after last week's standing meeting and watching it on YouTube, I just have to say something. The comprehensive, the city's comprehensive master plan that's being debated down here as far as paying for it raises some serious questions. First question is, don't you have better things to do with your money than pay focus groups, city residents to be focus groups, to participate in this plan? Wouldn't it be more economical and all-inclusive if we just sent surveys out to all city residents? If they wanted to participate, they could fill it out and send it in. I just, I'm smelling Pork Project here, and I hope that you all say no to this part of the plan. We do need a comprehensive plan here in the city. It makes perfect sense. It's long overdue, but this part of the plan here raises some serious eyebrows. This is the politics of exclusion, as far as I'm concerned. Not enough questions were asked as far as who was going to be in these focus groups, how much they will be paid individually. I read the numbers in the Post Gazette, which were different than the numbers I remember seeing in the, from the meeting. It's either 1.3 or 2.5 million, but that's a lot of money. Can't we use that money to rip some old dilapidated hostess down? Can't we use it for fix our roads? Can't we use it to fix our parks? These focus group ideas is just, well, it raises many questions, and that's all I want to say about it today. I hope you do a line item on that particular part of the plan and save the city residents a lot of money and be more inclusive in the process. Thank you for your time. Have a nice day, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
That exhausts our list, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess.
Line?
I think he was online. Chair of Human Resources.
New papers, not a person.
New papers, Reverend Burgess. And Councilman Carl Kill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Mr. Kraus?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
A little overexcited. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
My last girl. Thank you, Madam Clark.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2330, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning, Article 902.03 zoning map by changing from UCE, Urban Center Employment, to RMU, Residential Mixed Use. Certain properties located on McKee Place in the Fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry as block and lot numbers 28F-314, 28F-310, 28F-308, 28F-306, 28F-304, and 28F-302.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam President.
Yes.
May I request a waiver of the rules so that this bill, 2330, may appear on this afternoon's standing committee agenda?
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on today's standing committee's agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2325, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Payment in Lule of Taxes Agreement or Agreements with the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh for the Development of Bedford Dwellings Phase 1A Housing Project. And 2326, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Payment in Lule of Taxes Agreement or Agreements with the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh for the Development of Bedford Dwellings Phase 1B Housing Project.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman.
A motion to waive the rules of council so that both bills can appear on the standing committee meeting this afternoon.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bills will appear on today's standing committee's agenda. Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2301, Resolution Amending Resolution 615 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with ESRI, granting uncapped citywide access to ESRI's products, including ARC-GIS Velocity for all departments. This will allow the city to build and maintain an authoritative system of record. Expanding access to this system of record will enable the city to make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, and perform advanced analytics. It will also share information with the public, meeting the needs of the city of Pittsburgh by increasing the approved amount by $250,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,150,000 over four years.
I'd like to have a motion to waive Rule 8 so we can discuss this afternoon.
We have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on today's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2327, resolution approving a conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning, Article Nine, Article Six, excuse me, Chapter 919, Section 919.03. P. 2. B. for the stadium authority of the City of Pittsburgh, property owners for authorization to operate a major public destination facility electronic sign, large video display at West General Robinson Street and Mazarowsky Way, Block and Lot 8K36, zoned RIVNS Riverfront North Shore, 22nd Ward, Council District Number Six.
Thank you. And myself, or Councilman Wilson, I had you right. Did you?
What's that?
Did I call you?
What?
Did I call on you yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I already presented papers.
And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have no new papers. And I have a, we'll now move on to unfinished business and the unfinished business and we have, we need a motion to approve the following. Madam Clerk.
Bill Number 2034, resolution appointing Philip Wu as a member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire October 1st, 2029. Bill 2035, resolution appointing Michelle Miller Beener as a member of the Commission on Infrastructure, Asset Reporting, and Investment with a term to expire September 15th, 2027. And Bill Number 2085, resolution appointing Daylon Davis as a member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31st, 2027.
Motion to approve all three bills, please.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved. Thank you. So I'm trying to do the budget stuff at the same time. Our next order of business is reports to committee for final action. And we'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2318, reported a committee on finance and law for December 13th, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2147, resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to participate in applicable cooperative purchasing agreements for goods, materials, equipment, supplies, services, or construction as authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law for the 2024 fiscal year. Bill 2148, resolution providing for the letting of contracts and for the use of existing contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies, and equipment for city departments and the maintenance, repair, rental, and or leasing rehabilitation, renovation inspection, or servicing of city buildings and facilities, and for any miscellaneous services in and for any city departments and providing for the payment of the costs thereof for the 2024 fiscal year. Bill 2149, resolution adopting and approving the 2024 capital budget, the proposed 2024 community development program, and a 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program. Bill 2150, resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of the City of Pittsburgh and for meeting the debt charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024. Bill 2151, resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the City of Pittsburgh for the 2024 fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof in setting maximum levels for designated positions. Bill 2152, resolution authorizing City Council to approve intra-departmental transfers throughout the 2024 fiscal year. Bill 2153, resolution authorizing appropriations and salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024. Bill 2154, resolution authorizing appropriations, salaries, and capital expenditures of the Parks Trust Fund for the 2024 fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024. Bill 2155, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the URI of Pittsburgh for the administration of certain 2024 Pago-funded projects and programs and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $2,750,000. Bill 2156, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245 Earned Income Tax, Section 245.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax at subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2024. Bill 2157, resolution authorizing all city departments in conjunction with the Department of Finance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a facilities usage agreement or agreements during the 2024 calendar year for the purpose of permitting groups to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities in individual amounts not to exceed $10,000. Bill 2159, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246 Home Rule Tax, Section 246.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax at subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2024. Bill 2160, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Rural Property Tax and Exemption, Section 263.02 Payment Options Discount and Delinquency Penalty so as to set the payment, discount, and delinquent dates for the 2024 fiscal year. Bill 2161, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Rural Property Tax and Exemption by fixing the rate of real estate taxation for 2024. Bill 2184, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements and a lease or leases by in between the City of Pittsburgh and First Vehicle Services, a transdev company pursuant to which First Vehicle will furnish all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet, cost not to exceed $78,349,343.75 over a six-year period. Bill 2252, resolution amending Resolution 830 of 2021 authorizing an agreement or agreements with Tidings and Rosenberg LLP for services related to disparity studies for disadvantaged business enterprises by increasing the approved amount by $120,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $146,200 over one year. Bill 2253, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Claude Worthington Benedum Foundation for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $113,400 to support the creation of a wellness index for Black Women with Program Partner Carlo University. Bill 2254, resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget and a 2023 community development program and a 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program by re-appropriating and reallocating funds closed due to the requirements of Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2255, resolution further amending Resolution Number 704 of 2007, effective December 27, 2007, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2008 capital budget and the 2008 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2008 through 2012 capital improvement program by adjusting various line items in conformance with City Council's 2008 capital budget amendments by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2256, resolution further amending Resolution Number 768 of 2009, effective December 31, 2009, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2010 capital budget and the 2010 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2010 through 2014 capital improvement program by adjusting various line items in conformance of City Council's 2010 capital budget amendments by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closures pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2257, resolution further amending Resolution Number 796 of 2013, effective December 19, 2013, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2014 capital budget and the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2014 through 2019 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2258, resolution further amending Resolution Number 858 of 2014, effective January 1, 2015, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2015 capital budget and the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2015 through 2020 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2259, resolution further amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2016 capital budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2016 through 2021 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2260, resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2261, resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2019 capital budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2262, resolution further amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2020 capital budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2263, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 2264, resolution further amending Resolution 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by reducing public safety facilities by $18,647 and increasing park reconstruction by Bill 2265, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program by reducing facility improvements by $436,000, reducing litter can upgrades and monitoring by $828, increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $336,828, and increasing park reconstruction by $100,000. Bill 2268, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 218 Capital Budget and Improvement Plan by revising Section 218.05 Project Authorization to require notification to City Council when the city is applying for grants for projects and activities that are not pre-approved in the capital budget or grants valued over $250,000. Bill 2271, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 219 Operating Budget by revising Section 219.03 Collaborative Budgeting Process to require notification to City Council when the city is applying for grants or projects or activities that are not preapproved in the operating budget or for grants valued over $250,000. Bill 2282, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code, Pittsburgh City Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administrative, Chapter 219.04 Quarterly Reports in Order to Establish a Requirement of Quarterly Reporting of Special Revenue Funds. Bill 2283, resolution authorizing and directing the City Controller to close unused or obsolete trust funds. Bill 2299, resolution amending Resolution 523 of 2023, entitled, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Medical Debt Resolution Inc. Doing Businesses (RIP) Medical Debt for Services relating to the purchasing and retiring of medical debt for certain City of Pittsburgh residents for some not to exceed $1 million by updating the funding sources. Bill 2312, resolution amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program by increasing facilities improvements, sports facilities by $260,000, increasing facilities improvements, city facilities by $200,000, increasing play area improvements by $240,000, increasing park reconstruction by $97,998.50, increasing street resurfacing by $100,000, and increasing City Council's public service grants by $100,000 to be funded by a $997,998.50 transfer from the council as a body operating budget. Bill 2313, resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 capital improvement program by decreasing complete streets by $69,477.5 and increasing complete streets by $69,477.5 to amended project deliverables. Bill 2314, resolution further amending Resolution Number 723, effective December 27, 2022, as amended, entitled, adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget and the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program by increasing facilities improvements, city facilities by $13,500 to be funded by a $13,500 transfer from the council as a body operating budget.
I want to give you a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for all that.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to amend Bill 2150. It should, it is in front of all members. This simply accurately reflects the balance that is in our account after accounting for all the amendments made to the budget.
Second, Madam President.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bills amended. And now that moves us on to the rest of the bills and, for all the bills now, including the amended bill. Is there anything from members? You've heard the reading of the table of bills. Is there any discussion? Councilman Lavelle.
There was also an amendment you had asked to be prepared for Bill 2283 regarding the trust funds and defining how they're enacted.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
The motion, second. Any discussion? I'll just add that I've been asking the, our budget office to work with the administration, the Controller's Office, on closing out unused or obsolete trust funds. And Ria, the Deputy Director, Ria Price, has done an amazing job doing that work. But there's still a lot more that I think we need to go to, go through because there's eighty-seven trust funds and there's, on this piece, there's I think six of them that we're closing. So there's a lot more to look at. And so it'd be good, I'll send them to council members so we can review them and see what other ones we might want to close. But I also want to thank our budget director for his help in making sure that he allowed his staff to work on this. So we have a motion to amend? Do we have a second? All in favor? We do all in favor? We voted? Okay. And then for the rest of the bills, the remainder of the bills, is there any further discussion? I'm just going to say that there's some bills I'm going to vote no on in the budget. I'm going to vote no for the staffing number, number of staffing for police. I'm not voting for a number under nine hundred. I'm also not going to vote for the Stop the Violence Funds. funds. I actually have a lot of concerns about us passing this budget in general because we have not approved the fees, we do not know the number of, what the contracts will call. We have the fee scheduled today, this afternoon, that we're going to discuss, and a lot of this is based on that, but, on that, on those numbers. And also, so we don't know what the contract negotiations will bring, if they had a settlement, and my understanding, they may have had some type of a settlement, we don't know those numbers yet. So it's, I'm anxious about voting on any of it in the affirmative, but I'm definitely not voting on some of it in the affirmative. Anything else from members? Bills are now ready for final action, all in favor to pass or vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Are you, wait, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Coghill.
No on Bills two-one-five-one, no on two-one-five-three, and no on two-one-five-four. An aye on all others.
Ms. Gross.
No on Bills two-one-five-three, an aye on all other bills.
Aye, Madam, or Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Thank you. Aye on all bills excluding Bill twenty-one fifty-one, twenty-one fifty-three, and twenty-one fifty-four. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I went to twenty-one fifty-four, I apologize. There's another bill. I'm sorry, everyone. The twenty-two ninety-nine.
Seven ayes, two noes on Bill twenty-one fifty-one, eight ayes, one no on Bill twenty-one fifty-two, six ayes, three noes on Bill twenty-one fifty-three, eight ayes, one no on twenty-one fifty-four, eight ayes and one no on twenty-two ninety-nine, and nine ayes on all other bills.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill twenty-three nineteen, reported to Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two forty, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Blue Pearl in an Amount Not to Exceed Twelve Thousand Eighty-five Dollars and Twenty-Six Cent for Payment of Emergency Veterinary Services. Bill twenty-two ninety-one, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Six Conduct by Adding a New Section to Chapter six forty Humane Animal Protection Act to Include Section six forty point ten Forced Fed Products Prohibited.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bill? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Madam President, I wish to offer an amendment by substitution for Bill twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-two twenty-two ninety-one, some of it is technical.
We have a motion, we have a second, Councilwoman?
Thank you, some of it's technical in nature and some of it further clarifies exemptions to the bill.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam President, I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for spending some time with me yesterday to sort of tweak the bill to make it less prohibitive and to limit it to force-fed products, which of course was always the intent, and so I appreciate her work and I appreciate the support of my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Any further comments? And I'm just going to say thank you both for trying to amend this and make it something Council would agree with, I especially appreciate that you were working with us on the other bills we felt uncomfortable with, I'm still going to vote no on this today, but I do appreciate the intent and I know that you never put bills forward, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of concerns about what people say, but you never put bills forward unless you truly believe or unless you're hearing from some of your constituents, and so it may not seem important to some people, but it may be very important to others, and we're here to represent everyone. Councilwoman Strasburger? I mean, what would I say?
I just, for this particular bill, just because there's been, you know, a number of emails and whatnot, I am going to vote yes, I will say I have concerns about potential costs with, you know, litigating this down the road, but that's not to say, you know, there are other things that we have, this body has voted on that are important because we care about them, and, you know, that, that's just what, what we need to do. I will say for the, I know that there are some businesses that have concerns, you know, about what they, you know, and, and this notion of telling people what they can and can't eat, this is not about telling people what they can and can't eat, this is about animal cruelty, I think that's important to underscore, and that, at least from what I've been able to find, just sort of looking around, there, there are alternatives to forced, force-fed foie gras that, that exists, and I, I hope that the, and, well, I, I would love to see all the restaurants in Pittsburgh just band together and take a, you know, a pledge to, you know, to serve cruelty-free foie gras sort of of their own free will together, but, but yeah, short of that, I think, I think that there are clear alternatives and obviously those alternatives are accounted for in the bill, so thank you, Councilwoman Kraus and Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Councilwoman, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The bill's been amended, now we're voting, did we vote on the amendment?
We did, Madam Clerk.
We did, okay.
Oh, we didn't?
We did not. Can we, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion, discussion on the bill itself, as amended? Seeing none, I'm sorry, bill's now ready for final action, all in favor to pass or vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Yes on twenty-three nineteen, yes on twenty-two forty, no on twenty-two ninety-one.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
No.
Eight ayes, one no on Bill twenty-two forty, and seven ayes, two noes on Bill twenty-two ninety-one.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to our last committee, or I'm sorry, to Councilwoman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, Councilwoman Kraus.
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Councilwoman Kraus presents Bill number twenty-three twenty, reported to Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the Davis Avenue Pedestrian Bridge Project. Bill twenty-two fifty, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with STAN-TAC for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the Calera Street, Corley Street, and Maple Avenue Bridge product, projects, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million three hundred and twenty thousand dollars reimbursable at one hundred percent. And Bill twenty-two fifty-one, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Johnson, Miriman, and Thompson for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the West Carson Street Bridge, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed five hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cent reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, all in favor to pass or vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number twenty-three twenty-two, reported to Committee on Recreation and Youth for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recreate, with affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two sixty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pittsburgh Regional Transit in an Amount Not to Exceed sixteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cent for Transportation Services for the two thousand and twenty-three Richard S. Callagery Great Race on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Bill twenty-two sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Callagery City of Pittsburgh Great Race for a term of three years, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-six, with the option to renew for two one-year terms, two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight, at a total cost not to exceed the greater of sixty thousand dollars or forty percent of net revenues generated by each year's great race.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final pa, action, all in favor to passage, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that means Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development, I missed you.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
It's okay, I'm not offended.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill number twenty-three twenty-one, reported to Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two seventy-three, Resolution, Resolution that the Mayor and the Director of City Planning on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh are hereby authorized to accept funds for the Pittsburgh Regional Transit in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the creation of public art as a part of the Bus Rapid Transit Project. Bill twenty-two seventy-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement and/or contracts with the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of utilizing an AmeriCorps Vista in the Department of City Planning, cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars over one year. Bill twenty-three oh five, Resolution Further Mending Resolution Number seven seventy-two of two thousand and sixteen, effective January one, two thousand and seventeen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and seventeen Capital Budget and the two thousand and seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program, and approving the two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-two Capital Improvement Program by reducing St. Andrews Lutheran Church by three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and increasing Pittsburgh Musical Theater by three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and authorizing subsequent agreements. Bill twenty-three oh six, Resolution Further Mending Resolution Number eight sixty-four of two thousand and eighteen, effective January one, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and nineteen Capital Budget and the two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four commu, Capital Improvement Program, and by reducing the Light of Kimberly by five thousand dollars, and increasing Pittsburgh Musical Theater by five thousand dollars and authorizing subsequent agreements.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor to passage, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
And Technology, doesn't say it, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number twenty-three twenty-three, reported to Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two twenty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Director of Innovation and Performance, to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with IK Systems, Inc., for Security Camera Maintenance, Integration, and Support Services for a total cost not to exceed eight million thirty thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighteen cent over five years. Bill twenty-two sixty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution eight forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-one, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Service Agreement with Victor Stanley Services. The general objective is to utilize Victor Stanley Relay Technology to monitor fill levels of litter cans around the city and provide routing services for the Department of Public Works via a mobile application to save resources dedicated to litter collection at a cost not to exceed two hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars to extend the term by one year for a total term of three years. Bill twenty-two seventy-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement and/or agreements and amendments thereto with E Plus Technologies, Inc., for assistance in planning and executing a move from existing locations to a data center at a new location at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars over one year. And Bill number twenty-three oh two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Startup Participation Agreement with selected entities as part of the cohorts of the PGH Lab, and further authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a Program Participation Agreement with local municipal, municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars over one year.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor to passage, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
No on twenty-two sixty-nine, and aye on all others.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
No on twenty-two twenty-three, aye on all other bills.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven, seven ayes, one no on Bill twenty-two sixty-nine, twenty-two twenty-three, and eight ayes, zero noes on Bill twenty-two seventy-two and twenty-three oh two.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally That moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number twenty-three Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2324, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for December 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2244, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for services relating to the management of the URA's public parcel inventory and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $750,000. Bill 2245, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 116 of 2022, which authorize the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement and/or contract with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, PC for professional consulting services for federal government affairs and legislative services by authorizing $102,000 payment through the end of the currently executed contract term. Bill 2246, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 117 of 2022, which authorize the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement or contracts with Meladian Wooton, Inc. for professional consulting services for state government affairs and legislative services by authorizing $115,500 payment through the end of the currently executed contract term. And Bill 2247, Resolution Providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Dragon Way Project where the PWSA is overseeing the design and construction of the stormwater management components as well as the roadway replacement and rehabilitation and has or will retain the services of a design consultant, construction management, inspection consultant, and construction contractor for the project. The city will reimburse the PWSA for this work at a cost to the city not to exceed $823,994.94. And Bill 2248, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 56F, Lot 174 and 176, Council District Number 5, no cost to the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I just want to say that I think, I was really hesitant with the land bank stuff, but I think Sally Stadleman, who at first I wanted to not be real pleased with because the Six Boggs Avenue, which I wasn't happy, went to the land bank and went back to the same people I took it off of in the beginning. I wasn't real happy with that, but I was, I am really surprising, surprised about how amazing she has been handling the land bank, you know, thus far. And I want to thank our colleagues who serve on the land bank as well. With that said, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us to motions and resolutions.